This is the same as when we got yesterday?
I can remember that part. We're all good here? All right, settled in? Called a meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mrs. Tsukamoto.
Here.
Mr. Catalonello.
Here.
Mr. Landrigan.
Here.
Mrs. Vitale.
Here.
Ms. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Wolkowitz.
Here.
All right, so our agenda review, basically we have one agenda item for tonight, which is the budget overview. And then we will be having two following budget hearings. For those that grabbed agendas, please correct it. It should be February 21st, which is the Thursday at 7:00 PM. We won't make you come here on a Friday evening. And we'll be covering police, fire, Department of Public Works, and engineering. And then on March 2nd, Saturday morning, 9:00 AM, Board of Health, electric utility, water utility, capital, and I assume probably some other adjustments. And depending on timing wise, last year we tried to do a little more discussion town meeting wise around a time, but if time permits it, we will try to squeeze that in there too. Okay, so we're set on the agenda. So again, I want to welcome everyone that's come out on a lovely night, and hopefully we'll get out of here before the front really comes through. And who knows, you know? We got our spring clothes on today, and tomorrow bring back your winter attire. And just a little reminder on the process here, since tonight is just the budget overview, as the request was on Monday, that we should have a couple of opportunities to comment. Tonight, we will only have the single one, but as we get to the next couple of meetings, we will break it up a little bit, so you can comment on various parts of it. This is the overview. This kind of sets a tone. This is not the final budget you see. As you know from previous years, this is now my eighth year sitting somewhere in the room in this process, and every year, there has been changes, sometimes small, sometimes major, from introduction, from the first look to the end. So please take that as with what it comes from. A lot of the assumptions are in last year's figures, and we will change those as we have more information. The, our full binders at the budget that the council will work on, we'll see, we will get our hands on tonight. And we'll just keep refining it. And one of the things to assume is, on the expense side, there may be things we need to put in and things we need to take out, and that happens every time. You know, we have, we've had discussions last year, for example, on DPW staffing. Do we need more? Right now, it assumes it does not have that in there, so that could change. So please listen carefully, take notes, and whether it's tonight or the future meetings, you can share your thoughts, and it's directed towards the public and that.
Yeah, regarding the schedule, the last discussion we're going to have is March 2nd. Can someone explain the deadlines and all that, just to make sure that we're all okay?
For, for, Ty?
Is that going to be?
Okay, well, Robert, you can cover as far as when we have to introduce it, when it has to be passed for, to meet our deadlines for the state. We'll make sure Robert covers that.
Okay. Good.
Yep.
The one qualification, this is not a self-examination year. Normally, we're able, for AAA and don't receive transitionally aid and don't have orders exceptions, you can self-examine your books, but you can only do that periodically. This is a non-self-examination year, so we have to send the introduced budget prior to the document to send up for review. That takes between, Robert was estimating three to four weeks, given the volume and the reduced staffing. So that's the urgency of trying to expedite a final product, because it has to go down to the state. It's going to be a month down there, then when it comes back here, we have to advertise it, introduce it, have a public hearing, and then adopt it. And there's time between between that. We'll work on a formal schedule for you, but it's compressed.
The question is, just to want to make sure that we're meeting, we will meet the deadline. Yep?
Great. So Ben, you want to make your remarks as Chair of Finance, and then we'll call Robert up.
Fine, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to begin before I go over the highlights of the budget, to just say that this was my first time in the process, and I want to extend my thanks in public to Robert Califfett, to Ray Cody, and Jim Burnett. It was, it was a very interesting process, working with people who are serious about it, work hard, and who are clearly focused on what's doing best for Madison. In a process like this, you don't always agree. We didn't agree among ourselves. There is always a place to tweak. And you also extend a little bit of your own personality into the process, so there are some assumptions that are very conservative. There were some assumptions that are quite optimistic. I would say, in the case of our budget, we probably are somewhere between neutral and conservative. So I think that should give us all some confidence that we should be seeing ourselves doing just fine relative to the budget. I also want to point out that this budget shows relative to previous years, and we all know this, that Madison was not immune from the financial, the economic slowdown. There are some signs we're turning the corner, but there's residual pain as well, that you'll see in some portions of this budget. And the only other thing I want to say before I get into the highlights, is that during this entire process, everyone was mindful of the fact that our AAA rating bears focus and needs to be retained. Regardless of the details, which of course haven't been worked out yet, we can be sure one thing, which is midsummer will be going back into the capital markets, and we certainly like to do that from a position of strength. Now, let me give you the highlights. The, I'm sure that one number everyone's interested in is the proposed increase in taxes, which is 1.48%. Along with that increase, there is no increase in water rates, electric rates, any fees, and there's no reduction in any services. Moreover, there are no forced layoffs or employee furloughs. So we maintain a high level of services. We maintain a well-staffed municipal government, and we do it with a proximate half-point decline over the rate in taxes that we increased last year. I also want to point out that in the funding for capital projects, we've gone from $750,000 to $1 million. We've talked a lot about capital projects. We have a five-year plan that has come out of Vogel's office, and I think we're all to less, some degree, familiar with it. It takes money, 1 million seemed more prudent than 750. We had the opportunity to do it, and we took it. Also, relative to what we're allowed to do, as you know, what municipalities can do in the state has become increasingly constrained by ordinances and regulation, including how extensive a tax levy we can have, and also how much we can spend. And so Robert will show you this in details, but, in detail, but he's calculated that under the 2% tax levy, we are actually falling below it by 1.236 million dollars. So that's pretty impressive, but I find even more impressive that we are projected to be below the cap, the spending cap, by 3.2 million dollars. Both significant numbers, obviously the spending cap even the more interesting. You'll notice in looking at the sheets that you have available, that department operating expenses are down. The budget reflects increased contributions by our employees for health and pension costs. And it also absorbs a net decrease of $80,000 in health department contract revenue, with no impact on the services of the health department. It allocates $200,000 for water meter replacement, which will bring the total reserve for that purpose to 600,000 by year-end of this year. I have to say that the project aside, that's an approach I'm very favorable towards. The notion that you have an idea what it's going to cost, you put the money aside in advance, you get to that point, and you have the better part, if not all of it, available. We also have 100,000 in funding for electrical capital projects and 200,000 for water capital projects. The municipal surplus figures, as a note, do not reflect $300,000 for tax appeals. We don't, this group knows full well that we've gone through revaluation, and we can expect more appeals. And this is a prudent number, combined with setting aside 250 last year to meet the demand that'll come out of tax appeals. The electric surplus figures do not reflect over a million dollars paid out in response to Sandy. A lot of our neighboring communities unfortunately had to get into a situation of emergency appropriations as a result of Sandy. Indeed, it cost us somewhat in excess of a million dollars. And fortunately, and through good planning, we had those funds available. In addition, with Bob Landrigan's help, we're optimistic that approximately 75% of that amount will be returned to us in 2013. So we're looking for approximately $750,000 of the 1 million or so to be returned to us. Obviously, a nice injection to our budget during the year. And with that, what I would like to do is turn it over to Robert Califfett, who will go through this in more detail. Robert?
Good evening. Two remarks before I begin. It's two to three weeks at the review in Trenton, not three to four. Okay? And we would want to introduce a budget during the month of March to comply. And also, late yesterday, I got very good news that the tax collection rate was better than I anticipated. It had been sliding for three consecutive years. The tax collection rate last year was 98 and 1/4%, even though it was good, it turned around to 98.91%. That seems like a small increase, but that means, once I see the numbers, that means that the surplus should be 300,000 more than I'm estimating. So let's begin. This initial recommendation supports a spending increase of $465,000, which is 1.97% above last year, going from 23,651,000 to 24,116,000. And of that, the bulk was in the capital improvement fund. To begin with, the salaries and wages number rose by 174,000 or 1.84%, even though the contracts that had been granted were 2.0% when we started the year with the budget with two unplanned retirements in the police department, as you know. And that's what drove this number down. The 174,000, the primary three increases were in the police, 36,000, fire department, 42,000, and public works, 32,000. All other departments had minor increases in salary and wages, which you're going to see when you, when you review your booklets. The health insurance number, I'm budgeting a 4% increase, even though the rates increased 9%. Combination of the retirements, combination of some employees declining their health insurance, and the combination of the increased contributions that will take place during 2013 drove that number down to 4.0, a very manageable number. Pension and social security reduced, was reduced again for the second year, which was quite a surprise from my perspective, since the portfolios, I don't believe, at state level are really not returning what they need to return. But nonetheless, the contributions have declined. Of the $98,000 reduction, the bulk of that was in police and fire, I think of 86,000. I'm not going to recommend any increase in unemployment insurance. The legal budget of $255,000 consists of a budget of 200,000 for our municipal legal, $40,000 for the court prosecutor, and 15,000 for the public defender. Departmental operating expenses remained essentially the same at 2.3 million. There were some very minor swings there. There was a reduction of $24,000 in the Board of Health operating expense budget, 11,000 reduction in the police budget. And there were some minor increases in all the other departments. The utilities is up 30,000, $30,000, and essentially all of that is for fuel. Waste removal increased by 48,000, and the largest increase, as you will see, is in the pickup of trash and garbage. I do not need any additional appropriations for liability insurance this year. The capital improvement is up from 750 to 1 million dollars. That's funded in three areas. $500,000 from fund balance, 389,500 from the sale of our property, and 110,500 in additional non-taxable municipal revenues. We'll fund the same amount of the revaluation, though. Many of the council members have attended the joint meeting, so you're familiar with that number. The library number of 1,258,850, I calculated by the following method. I did not have, or don't have, a final assessed evaluation number. So I'm assuming 3,450 million dollars. That may be a little high, so this number could go down. With applied at 1/3 of 1 mil, would be 1,148,500, and add 110,000 to that number for electricity. That's the derivation of that number. And lastly, for the first time in six years, I'm recommending that we slightly nudge the reserve for uncollected taxes. It has not been increased since the year 2007. As the tax levy grows and grows and grows and grows, and as the tax collection rate went down for the last three years, excluding the year 2005, we generated smaller and smaller amounts of surplus. The smaller amounts of surplus, well, we generated smaller amounts of surplus through the reserve for uncollected taxes. I believe this strengthens the budget, and I believe this sends a message to standard empires that we heard what they said. On the revenue side...
Can we add some sort of questions before we move on?
Yeah, we'll take a, from the council, not from the audience, but we'll take, before we go to revenue, we'll take questions or comments on, or more so questions right now on expenses. Jeanne?
Okay, oh, thank you. We'll start from the bottom. The reserve for uncollected taxes, what did you say earlier was the collection rate in 2012?
The collection rate actually, actually went up from last year.
It actually went up to what percentage?
To 98.91.
98.1, and?
98.91.
Oh, okay. And the, so this million and a half, it's approximately, assuming what percent, what rate?
That would probably be at 97.5.
Okay, so, okay, so we're, we're increasing this while the collection rate, it's increasing at the same time?
Well, it increased.
To generate more surplus?
Yeah, it increased from, from the lowest rate that we've seen here in two decades.
Okay. And using the amount that we had in 2012, how much did we generate in 2012 with this number?
595,000.
And this year, the assumption is?
Well, I was estimating six, but I think it's going to be closer to nine.
900?
900,000, I believe that.
900,000 by doing this? I see.
Yeah, and that's on a levy of 57 million.
Right, okay.
900,000 with the increased, with the higher rate of collection rate?
With last year's collection rate?
It's not, it's not 900,000 above last year. Last year...
Well, it's totaled, not...
That is, I'm estimating that. We don't, we don't have the numbers. I don't have the numbers yet, and actually, the numbers are really not final until the order says they're final.
Okay. The next question is that regarding utility?
Yes.
For the library? That's, you mentioned electricity. Is only electricity, not water?
That is correct.
Okay, just electric. What was the electricity usage in 2012 for the library?
Well, I think the bills were somewhere in the, in the area. Well, we didn't start billing them until May?
Yeah, they did, they did not have a full year, so it would be, so we'd have to check.
Something like 70,000 or 80,000, Jeanne.
So 110 is just about right. Is that how we figure out that number?
Yeah.
And one of the things I have suggested as we look at that library number, is not to adjust it on an annual basis unless the rate changes, because I, in one way, to charge, have them pay for electric and then reimburse them, but not dollar to dollar. If they do a great job and make it more energy efficient, they can then redirect that money. But if we're going to just dollar to dollar, they have no incentive to make themselves more energy efficient.
Going back up to waste removal, Robert, did you say that this is due to the increase of the cost for pickup, garbage pickup?
Yes.
What kind of contract do we have? Would you refresh my memory? I thought that was a three-year contract.
Five-year.
Five-year contract. So the rate is going up?
It has a slight escalation every year.
So this is the fourth?
Fourth of the fifth year. Also, um, the... Oh, sorry. Also, sorry. Fourth of the fifth year. Second thing to keep in mind is, we've had a significant drop-off in the marketability of the paper, paper that we recycle. So as a result, in months past, we would get a check for 1,000, $2,000 a month from the company that takes our recycling and sells it. Now we're at about flat, or even maybe getting charged. That's a contract that was done by Doug Smith in 2010. That's got another year and a half to go as well, under that contract, before we can source out another person to receive and sell the recycled goods. Those numbers tend to fluctuate, and I track them on a monthly basis, so that could change. And if that changes, then we'll have set aside a little bit more in waste removal than we needed. But again, to be conservative, we can't predict what the market's going to be like in our ability to sell the paper, so we want to be conservative there.
Was there any changes regarding tipping fee? Any change in tipping fee this year? I thought that was going down, right?
It's going down, February 1st, $2 a ton, but it's offset by the loss of the... We're losing the revenue and picking up a cost on the recycling. We used to budget approximately 30,000 in revenue. Now we're not getting the revenue, and now we're paying. So it's a better, it is good.
Okay, so you already put that into consideration then?
Right.
Yep, the plus and the minus. Okay.
So, um...
Jeanne, did you have any more? For you? Jeanne, where you at?
Sorry. No, I want to stay on the same thing, so.
Same time, okay, yep.
Okay. So this waste removal is, that's yard waste, recycling, and the one-day pickup?
Correct. There's no...
And then the two-day pickup later on? Okay, so that, that encompasses everything?
Yes, and there's no change unless the governing body wants to change the collection process. Right, as of right now, it's eight months of once a week?
Right.
And four months, May, June, July, and August, twice a week.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was, you know, the, that waste removal, you know, that we have on Wednesdays for grass clippings and stuff? Okay. That's everything.
Can we go up the line?
Jeanne, add another one?
Yeah, going back here. Going up the line here. Robert, can you talk about the 11% increase for legal fee?
Yes, that is, the municipal legal budget last year was 174,000, and we're recommending to take it to 200,000 based upon the litigation that's ongoing.
Okay. And legal over here is just, the legal here does not include any potential dollars that we need to pay for a settlement, right? This is just legal services, correct?
None, zero.
Okay.
We have reserves established for potential claims.
Yeah.
So why don't you share that?
Well, we established a reserve of 250,000 in fiscal year 2011 for tax appeals. I think there's a balance left of 120 in that. We set up another reserve for 300,000 primarily because of one appeal.
And we also have litigation reserves of 70,000 a year we've been establishing.
Litigation reserve?
Oh, I have, in the, in the liability insurance, Jeanne? I have 70,000 in there.
Right.
For how many years? Also, prior years?
There's, there are significant appropriation reserves.
This is good news, Robert, you want to get good news out.
Yeah.
And this is to cover our exposure based on our current policy as far as deductibles and so on, yeah. So that we...
So we have, so we have like multiples of seven, multiple years?
We probably have four years, we probably have about...
Well, we can't, they've been canceled, but I have the full 70,000 from 2012.
So they're not cumulative, it's just, it's just seven, you carry it?
Well, accumulative in the sense it rolls into appropriation reserve, and then from reserve into surplus, so we don't lose it. And then the other point, which Robert probably wanted to reinforce, is the 55,000 of the cost is for the prosecutors, the two prosecutors, and the public defender. That is recaptured and reimbursed to the borough.
By the joint court, yeah, that's right.
Through the joint court budget. So it's not a straight dollar output. And in terms of the borough attorney, our prior borough attorney charges 120,000 a year. Our current borough attorney, because Liz and I, and with Jim's help, have taken over the drafting responsibility, reduced his retainer from 120,000 to 60,000. That's built in here and reflected, so that's a recurring saving that we'll have during his tenure. He's charging half what our prior attorney was charging.
Right, that's what I was asking, why the increase, because we know that we're saving dollars, legal costs.
Though, I think that, we saw that savings from 2011 to 2012, because last year, we did, we went out for the RFP, and we budgeted a lower amount for...
Right, we did, remember that, right? Okay. Robert, you will be really helpful, because from time to time, you talk about that you have these different reserves.
Yeah, I do.
Could you give us like an itemized list of all the reserves that you have, because it's certainly not in the package?
Okay.
That would be helpful, thank you.
I can do that. You can sleep at night, we're covered for a lot of unanticipated events.
So other, other questions on the expense side?
Can I just ask a question? Going back to the health budgeting, you said that there, you were budgeting 4% increase, you know, for various reasons.
Four.
Is one of those because everybody is reaching the July tier now, that they're going to be paying more?
It's a combination of both. Everyone is now paying, as of January 1st, on the second year of the state's schedule.
Right.
On July 1st, according to the state's rules, the third year starts. So we've got a half-year at the second level, and then we have an additional contribution by the employees on July 1st, it goes to the third level, and a greater contribution. We also have pension escalation during the same period, not of the same magnitude. That's factored in, our actual increase.
So then, when do we go to the next tier?
July 1st.
Yeah, in July 1st, but then after that?
July 1st.
One more.
Then it goes to one year, okay.
July 14th. July 14th.
And that's at maximum, that's 30% of premium.
And there's also, there will be even additional reduction once the fire department, because they're essentially a year and a half behind.
Right.
So Carmella, so we, what we, not only do we have the contributions reducing this, but we have people lowering coverages, we have people dropping out, and then over the course of the year, we had several retirements that were not, that were filled with part-time non-benefit. So all of that is going into this.
Okay, any other questions on expenses? Let's go to the revenue side?
Let me make, I actually skipped over one big, one big area here in appropriations, debt service. I did not make a comment on that. The debt service, I just wanted to update you. In 2013, the debt service on the $26,321 bond issue is essentially 2,196. And then there are small, there are four smaller infrastructure trust bonds that we have outstanding. We have one payment during the course of the year of, for a 2010 series of 20,746, another for the 2010 A series of 35,962, and then two... And then two very smaller, uh, trust payments of sixty-seven hundred and forty-six hundred. That's the composition of that. Um, it really doesn't start to seriously drop until two thousand and twenty-three. It's, it's, it's kinda staying at two-point-two million.
Rob?
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
And of that figure, is there any debt service for the MRC project in there?
No, no, that,
So we have seven-point-four million dollars of notes, but that's not reflected in there?
No, that will be all funded, uh, eventually through,
Through open space, yep.
For the government.
Yep, okay.
I just wanted to add one thing about the reserve for uncollected tax. Um, that covers the tax collection, for the tax collection for the county, the tax collection for the school board, and the tax collection for the municipality. And we used to collect a total of about fifty million dollars in taxes a few years ago. Now we're up to about fifty-six million. Um, obviously taxes go up, um, you know, school board notwithstanding. The point is, being conservative on reserve for uncollected tax, um, became it, in, a little bit more of a discussion this year because you look at a situation like Union Beach or something else where a natural disaster can cause a major drop in your ratable base, can cause a major drop in, uh, the economic viability of certain individuals as it has in that town. So when we're at a collection rate of ninety-eight point nine or ninety-eight point two as we were, um, we're at ninety-eight point two-five in two thousand and eleven, to say we only have six hundred thousand dollars in case of a calamity like that, it's, one could argue that it's good conservative approach to increase that. It, if we don't need it, the benefit is, it just goes into tax relief the following year. So it's not as though it's money that's just being tossed away. It's money that's being put in reserve in case there's a bad si, situation that happens. And if it doesn't, it, it just goes back to surplus and helps reduce taxes the following year.
And I, I think two key, uh, takeaways from that. Two years in a row, Madison was, has had that cushion to respond to, uh, weather disasters without having to have special appropriations. And so that shows how this, uh, philosophy has really helped us. And the other is, you look at that one-point-five-six million, uh, reserve for uncollected taxes, and you look at up above at the thirteen million, and you lose track of the fact that it's not against that thirteen million, as Jim, Jim just pointed out. It's against the school and the county along with the thirteen million. All right, now we can shift to revenue.
Sure.
Almost.
One, one last point. I mean, the, the other piece is as a cushion, when we pay the county and we pay the schools, they get a full disbursement. When we get a tax refund and we're obligated to reimburse money and refund money to the taxpayer, we pay a hundred percent of that refund. We don't get a prorated share back from the school district or from the county. So this is another cushion to build that reserve. And especially in a rebal year, we're being ultra cautious to build reserves 'cause we don't know what the anticipated, uh, filings will be.
Ray, isn't that Robert just said, or somebody said earlier, that we have a separate reserve for tax appeals?
We do.
So we're double protected, that's what we're saying, right? We have three hundred thousand, if I remember correctly, that was the number, for the reserve for, um, tax appeals. And in addition to that, we have another cushion of potentially nine hundred thousand here.
Nine hundred thousand, no, no, no.
Here, if we're gonna generate, right, didn't we just talk about earlier that potentially in two thousand and thirteen with a million-five of reserve for uncollected taxes, based on two thousand and twelve's collection rate, we can potentially generate nine hundred thousand dollars back into the surplus.
And that surplus, you don't spend against that.
Understand that, but that's a cushion.
It's a cushion and, and it, and as, as we'll, can reinforce when Rob, Robert gets to the revenue side, that actually shows up in prior year surplus. And Rob, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, not to beat a dead horse, but i, if we're, if we really are trying to protect from like these sort of, you know, calamities, uh, that other towns have experienced, is a quarter of a percent of the overall budget enough? Uh, I mean, really one-point-five, one-point-five-six, you know, if we're talking about major disruption, you know, due to natural disasters or this severe unknown after the rebound, is sixty thousand dollars enough? Should you be reserving more?
I'll, I'll respond to that. I, I'll respond to that, Robert. I think the thought process, um, would be that there's a good argument to be made that every year if you increased your reserve for uncollected tax at least to the same amount that the entire municipal, or the entire, um, tax that we were, um, pulling in from the residents was, say, if it goes up by two percent in total, or one and a half percent by total, that that should go up. We didn't do that for a number of years, so the percentage of that shrunk significantly. So I think more to your point is just a, a judicious, slow, small, two percent a year increase. This is four percent this year because we missed many years of it.
So trying to preserve the value of that reserve.
The catalyst for, for, uh, myself recommending this to Jim and Ray was salaries and wages, health insurance, pension, unemployment insurance, legal, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, all of it came in so low. It all came in so low. It, 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 it presented the opportunity to increase that, the reserve.
To provide additional protection as Rob pointed out.
Yeah, I just don't know how much protection we're gonna get for sixty thousand dollars.
Right, yeah, it's, it's, yeah.
It's just a start.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay. It's just a start.
Yep.
So your recommendation is, is that we should, we should have been increasing two percent, you know, on a yearly basis for the last couple of years or whatever? Or should we do another two percent next year? Is that what you're, you're thinking is?
I have to see all the numbers.
Yeah.
I have to see the two thousand and thirteen results.
Yeah.
I have to see the two thousand, um, recommendations from the departments for two thousand and fourteen. Um, and then I would, then I would present a recommendation.
Okay.
I don't think it's prudent to go backwards on that number.
Okay.
Now we're ready for revenue.
Okay. Um, I have to put the appropriations together first before I can even think about, uh, doing revenue recommendations of Jim and Ray. The, I was, uh, once I looked at what our surplus estimate is, and it's gonna be higher than, than the numbers we're gonna look at this evening, I'm quite certain of that, um, I, I didn't want to, let me say this, we accomplished what we needed to. We're gonna probably generate three-point-eight million in surplus. We transferred two-point-eight. We got that done. Once the audit is, is, uh, is completed, I'll send that off to standard emporers, they'll see that. I wanna, I wanna be very comfortable that we can do that in two thousand and thirteen and with a transfer number of two million, nine-hundred-seventy-five thousand. I am, I have, I, I really, unless things really fall apart, I have a hundred percent confidence that we're going to exceed that number as well. The municipal sources numbers, which I can provide you schedules if you would like, there were, they're reduced by one-hundred-ninety-four thousand, but there were several significant changes. The, the court fines have come tumbling down over the last three years, what we've been collecting. So the, the budget, um, we collected a hundred ninety-nine thousand, the prior year was two hundred forty-four, prior year that was like two sixty, one year I think was two ninety-nine. Uh, the numbers keep, uh, going down, so I'm gonna recommend we take the budget down from two forty-five to one eighty, reduction of sixty-five. The joint court, um, we collected three-hundred-and-sixty thousand. I, uh, I'll be sending out the, the bills, uh, next week to the, uh, Chatham Borough, Chatham Township, and Harding, and that total number is three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand. So I'm recommending the joint court budget be reduced, uh, the income from three forty to three-ten. Next item is the construction code. Um, I'm gonna recommend we increase that from three sixty-five to four hundred. Um, and I'll address this again. The, the construction code revenues have spiked because of the commercial projects.
Robert, is there a sheet that we're supposed to be looking at because we don't have it?
I'm gonna, uh, send that out to you in your, in your pack, in your packets over the weekend. Uh, the construction code numbers primarily, uh, sent around, around three hundred to three fifty for, for commercial. However, it, um, I think we collected three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand in two thousand and ten, over a million and eleven, and seven-hundred-and-eleven thousand this year. Uh, the four of us had discussions on that number. We're, we're taking it to three sixty-five to, to four hundred thousand. Um, if, we're gonna need, we're going to need commercial projects. That's just my opinion on the numbers that I've seen. Uh, otherwise we may not generate four hundred thousand in, in construction code fees.
Well, we just found out a hundred.
Robert, didn't NAPA pull a hundred thousand dollar permit today? Yes.
They did? Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Uh, the health contracts are down from three forty to two sixty, we're down eighty thousand. I'm recommending we, uh, increase the water utility surplus transfer from three fifty to four fifty. The general fund balance is going from seven-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand down to five hundred thousand, reduction of two, two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand. Uh, the affordable housing number of fifty thousand is out, it's now zero. And then lastly, we're increasing the delinquent tax revenue budget from two hundred thousand to four hundred thousand. That gets us to the, uh, so it's primarily the, uh, on a net basis, the general fund balance reduction from seven-seventy-two to five hundred. Both state aid and grants are, uh, uh, we're, we're, I'm gonna recommend that we have the, uh, budget the same number. The electric utility surplus, uh, we, we generated over, I believe the number's gonna be over four-point-one million, um, in, in two thousand and twelve. Uh, and that basically was a combination of, of excess revenues above the budget of three-point-four million and cancel, cancellation of prior year's appropriation reserves of seven hundred thousand. That's four-point-one million. Uh, in two thousand and thirteen, because of what we spent on Hurricane Sandy. Uh, if we have the same, same pattern in, in billing and consumption, which consumption should be up with realogy onboard, if we have the same collections of, of, above the budget of three-point-four million, uh, the cancellation of the reserves, uh, is gonna be far less, could be two or three hundred thousand dollars.
Robert, is that where the one million dollars came from?
That's where it all came from.
I wasn't sure what you,
Okay, that's, that's, we're, we're just very fortunate. Um, the, uh, the kilowatt-hour consumptions were down, so the, the spending on the, uh, purch, wholesale purchase power was lower.
But, uh, um, if the, if the, if the kilowatt hour was up, then, you know, we still make the spread between where we buy and where we sell, right?
Yes.
So, I don't understand the relevance of your last point.
Well, um, because we canceled seven hu, of the four-point-one million, a surplus that we, that I believe we generated,
Yes.
seven hundred thousand of that was cancellation of prior year's reserves.
I see.
We don't have that to cancel because we spent it on the storm, but we're gonna see it in the FEMA reimbursement that hopefully we receive in two thousand and thirteen.
May, may I ask a question, Mayor?
Yep, go, go ahead.
Um, and pardon me for interrupting, I've been maybe shifting gears. Um, it seems as though, um, while I know Robert mentioned that we weren't going to be raising electric rates this year, uh, when do we ever discuss cutting electric rates? I mean, the surplus seems to be doing fine, uh, growing every year. We pay, Madison residents are paying close to what everyone else pays. Is, is this, and now, is this the time to do that, or?
Uh, I would say as a, um, because that would be dealt in a, a separate, you know, ordinance and review of fees. I, I think we certainly, I think the assumption had been going on is when we get into our new contracts, we look at the rates. If we need to visit it now, we, you know, we can put that on the, uh, in the hopper and look at the impact of, um, that we said, if, if we're well above market, we need to obviously look at it. If we're at market, then, um, or below market, we look at it from a different angle. So for, if it's time to review it, we should do that, but not just, uh, to lower the rates, but also look at what it does to our future budgets, both for electric and operating.
Can I add three points, Mayor? I mean, the new contract doesn't start until, the, the existing contract expires May thirty-first, so we're not gonna experience reduced costs until on or about June first. The surplus numbers for the electric utility include eight hundred thousand dollars of cancellation that we're not gonna have again.
Yeah.
And in two thousand and thirteen, we anticipate getting passed out to us from the grid, demand and capacity charges in excess of six hundred thousand dollars additional. So until that stabilizes, we wanted to wait and see how we're doing. Plus, we also have the issue of consumption, you know, it depends on the market, depends on the weather. So we thought we would look at it as part of the conversation when we head to the new contract environment and then the governing body can decide, keep the rate, reduce the rate. We're not proposing to raise the rate under any circumstances.
My only, I guess, you know, the, the more I do this, the more it really seems like, um, the electric rates we pay, um, are kind of a tax, considering, you know, we make money on it. And wouldn't it be better for the majority of Madison residents to lower their electric rate? Maybe increase the municipal tax rate so at least they get the write-off at the federal level? I, I, some, some of us won't have that luxury. The majority of the town will, and, yeah, I believe in discussions with S and P, they often cite us, uh, cited concern is that we don't tax enough toward the, the level we're allowed to. So, I mean, you know, i, i, if the, if the resident's gonna pay out of the left pocket or the right pocket, okay? Which is kind of, to me, it seems like what's going on. Wouldn't it make more sense to allow the majority of the town, uh, who will still qualify for these write-offs, uh, to, to get to enjoy that write-off at the federal level?
I, I, I think we, this'll be an extended conversation because it, it is more difficult than just, uh,
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Because it's, because if you're charging below the market just so they can, and we charge more in taxes, we're actually subsidizing electric because we're no longer charging, you know, kind of the, the going rate. So we're not encouraging conservation and so on. So I, I think it is a very extended conversation and we'll make a note to keep that conversation going at a future time.
I mean, I, yeah, like, unfortunately I'm gonna lose that privilege, I'm sure, very soon in terms of what I get to write off. But I think the majority of town will still be able to write off a lot of their municipal taxes.
Yep.
Probably better than the federal level.
Yep.
Well, that's, that's the point, yes.
Yeah.
If I could, I mean, the, the flip side of that is our largest user is a tax-exempt property, which is true.
Yeah, it's, I, I, I think we,
But we can, we can, we can do, we can have rate schedules, right? I mean, so does the one figure question, well, I'm just saying.
It, it, it is, and, and the other thing on the horizon is the, uh, our smart meters and how that will affect, uh, the, um,
The rate structure.
The rate structure, so I, this, this is a very good conversation which could take us, use up a couple of tapes.
I'm, I'm not worried about true, I'm worried about my neighbors.
Right.
Who live here, not the, not the, not the problem.
Yep, and I think we,
You know, and their federal tax returns.
Yep. Not on electric rates?
Not on.
Okay, all right. Yes, go ahead, Jean.
Municipal sources, um, since we don't have the itemized list that you have.
You'll have it over the weekend.
Yeah.
Okay, um, can you go through, not go through the numbers, but give us a feeling as to why two thousand and thirteen, it's not going to be as good of a year as two thousand and twelve?
Rob, Robert, uh, one of the, one of the main things is the, um, reduction in the amount of fund balance that's being used. Fund balance flows through that, and, um, as you recall, last year we used seven-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand of fund balance. This year we're gonna use five hundred thousand of fund balance. So two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollar reduction in that line item alone is caused by that. So, um, and that's the predominant reason why that number went down, one ninety-four, is actually one number within it went down two-seventy-two. So, uh, and beyond that, the number of sources of municipal revenue, there's twenty,
So municipal sources, what you're saying is deadline item included the fund balance that the number,
Yes, it does.
Okay, since we don't, it's hard to see because we don't have that in us.
It would be helpful, it would have been helpful to have that.
Two hundred dollars is the property, the per sales rate.
No, that's a separate one.
That's, 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 yeah.
That's a separate one, okay. So, put that fund balance number aside.
Okay.
How, what's the expectation for two thousand and thirteen? I'm talking about real revenues, right? Municipal sources, to me, the majority of it should be revenue, so.
So it sounds like it's going, it's actually going up because,
An eighty-five thousand dollar increase.
Is that right? Because Ray just mentioned that we just collected something today.
Yeah.
And I expected there are various fees, right, that we will get.
But in, in, as we continue to do in the, in the past and will continue to do here, we're cautious on the estimates because we're not exactly sure how many construction code fees we're gonna get this year. So we're cautious on it. We hope that we have more activity in that department and what ends up happening, it ends up becoming, um, not anticipated revenue that again falls in, into the surplus. So, um, there are a lot of moving numbers that are in there, license fees, municipal court fines, interest on taxes, daily parking fees, interest income, burglar alarm, cable fees, cell tower leases, sewer connection fees. And they all have a tendency to kind of move, but in totality, they kind of average each other out. It's kind of like a portfolio, that ends up averaging itself out, but we'll get to that.
Now, we did not include any numbers for the sales of GVR and the potential income that we can get from that site, correct?
We did, we did not include it, because we don't know whether that will be consummated, that transaction.
Yep, so I think the safest thing is wait until that is done. And I, I think one of the key takeaways from this quick conversation is, if you underestimate the municipal sources, the extra money flows to prior year surplus next year and helps that budget. If you overestimate it, you now are caught short trying to figure out where you're gonna cover that, so. Alright, Robert.
Janie, three big items, also in addition to this fund balance. Court fines, the 2012 budget was 245 and budgeting 180, we've collected 199 in 2012, and the number just keeps going that way. As I mentioned before, the joint court is down $30,000. Why? Because the allocations to, two of the members are lower in 2013, and health contracts are down 80,000, because we lost three towns and picked up one.
Thank you. So, the... Robert, does that also include, you didn't put anything in here in the anticipation of a shared service agreement with the construction code?
Correct.
Right, it's not in here? Because we had, we had anticipated what, if that, if that happened?
We would've been positive 60,000, the Chatham Borough Council asked to defer that decision on their side for a one-year period, so we'll be patient.
So that's a possibility in 2014?
That's a possibility, and in terms of the health, we have two pending contract proposals on the health side, pending with Scotch Plains and with Mine Hill.
Mine Hill.
And if those came in, we actually would be in a, a net positive position compared to last year.
There's also, I'm sorry, there are also efforts underway to increase the revenue in the joint court.
Right.
So all these things, you know, and I said earlier, I thought it was, the budget was somewhere between neutral and conservative, that's what I meant. I mean, you could, you could factor in all these things and say, well, probability we get half of them, or we get three quarters, and that would add this much to the budget. But rather than do that, it's the old, you know, don't count until they hatch.
Yeah, if that all happens, 2014 doesn't look so bad. We should live that long.
That's right. Okay, Robert?
Well, the sale of the property, obviously, that came from, from the auction. The, we arrived at the $3,722,000 transfer number from the electric utility in order to drive the number from, to 1.48 percent. And that's, that's how that number was arrived at.
So we are, year over year, we're transferring approximately $306,000 more from the combined water and electric utility circuses, 12 versus 13, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I?
Yep.
Robert, in terms of municipal surplus, you know, do I have this right? In, this year, we're proposing to use 2,975,000, right? And we generated 3,649,000.
That's, that's number is gonna go higher after.
Okay, and you believe that's gonna go to 3.8 possibly, approximately?
It's going high, that number is gonna go higher.
Alright, so our total, before that possibility of the going north, was $5,214,000 for municipal surplus. And if you take 2.975 percent, I mean, 2,975,000 out of the total, in this year's budget, we're projecting to use 57 percent of the municipal surplus for tax relief, when last year, we used the municipal surplus for tax relief for 64.14 percent. So we're going down 7 percent using the surplus?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So we just...
We've had a bigger surplus though, right? It's great we had a bigger surplus.
Yeah.
It's fantastic.
Yep, move on.
Move on.
Yep.
This is the tax levy cap calculation.
Page two.
This is not the precise way that you do it. I wanted to just keep it simple, because I wanted to have an apples-to-apples. You see the $13,437,208 on the front page for the property taxes for the year 2012? That's the starting point, you can see that? And in actuality, what you do is you back out the library number, you increase the net number on 2 percent, then you add the library number back in. I just, I just wanted to make this schedule more simplistic.
Sounds, yep.
So you increase that number by 2 percent. You're permitted to add the revaluation note of 80 grand, you're permitted to increase it by the capital improvements, you're permitted to increase it by the new ratables, and that's how we arrive at the 1,236,000. Questions?
No problem, yep.
Sure. There's our house. So, I'll talk, I'll talk to this. This is what was basically in last year's budget and brief, this document. This shows the average resident tax bill, if you were last year. Traditionally, we usually put in the assessed value, but we just decided it was easier to kind of put in market value. People don't really know what their assessed value is, but they know approximately what the value of their house is. So this is the tax bill, an illustrative tax bill of someone who has a house that's worth approximately $718,000 that they want to sell it. And it just gives you an example of the percentage breakdown, so.
And since we have a realtor in the room, that house there is not gonna sell for only $718,000, so it's just a...
Yeah, that's gonna...
Alright, sorry.
Sure. The expenditure cap calculation schedule? This is for spending inside of the cap. You begin with your total appropriations number, including the reserve from collected taxes, and then you back out, on the modification side, all of the items that are outside the cap, and then you apply the 3.5 percent on the net number, you apply that 3.5 percent on $17,279,719, apply the 3.5 percent on that. The cap bank from 2012 was an enormous $2,757,000, and then once again, you, you can add in the value of new construction.
Excuse me, Robert, not that it will matter much?
Excuse me?
Not that it will matter much, it's a rounding error, but shouldn't reserve uncollected taxes for 2013 to 1.569?
No, what you do is, Rob, the modifications are from 2012. You begin with the 2012 number, then you back out, all, all these numbers that you see there are from 2012.
I wasn't paying attention, my fault.
Okay.
My apologies.
This is a result of...
Robert, the debt service number is not from 2012.
Pardon me?
The debt service number does not match 2012, that's why we're confused about what numbers you're using.
Oh, you're correct, I'm sorry. I will revise that. So what's happened here is, is the cap banks are a result of spending reductions that were made in 2009, 10, 11, and 12, and primarily last year, we had, as you know, reductions of over $800,000 in the combination of salaries and wages, health insurance, and pension. So we're, we're millions under that. Eventually, these, all of these carryovers will drop off. But it is good for us to go to the 3.5 percent cap ordinance. Once again, just so we have the benefit of having these cap banks, if in fact, they're ever, ever needed. The next four schedules all deal with the surplus. And all, by the way, according to the best practices checklist, one of the items on there is that every year, that I should be reviewing the last five years of surplus with you. I don't intend to discuss these. If you have a question on any of the prior years, feel, feel free to ask, but here is the, we ended the year 2011 with 4,365, there's the transfer that we did of 2.8, and there's the, what I anticipated to generate in 2012, 3,649, which you know is going higher, and that stops the reversal of the, what we're generating is less than what we transferred. And I do have 100 percent confidence that that will recur in 2013.
Very good to see.
Robert?
Yes?
About the tax appeals?
Yeah.
I think that's where I saw the 300,000 reserved for the tax appeals.
Yes.
Now, we still have quite a few outstanding tax appeals, some, what about that big one?
No, that's been recommended for settlement, it'll be on the next agenda, and Matt O'Donnell will be in executive session to discuss it.
This is Stop and Shop?
It is Stop and Shop.
Okay, that's the last one?
That's our biggest one, all the elements have been settled, and that'll be settled for a small portion of that reserve, and I believe, he's coming in, so you can ask him the questions directly, but he believes we're in good shape.
Good, thank you.
Ray, can I, is it appropriate for me to make a comment on the credits versus the...
Sure, whatever you wanna share, sure.
The credits versus the refunds?
Yes, I mean, it's another prudent step, Robert wants to say, and he's dying to ask the, we recommend that we'd rather pay cash on the barrelhead when we settle these matters, other towns kick it down, can down the road and provide credits on future years' payments and taxes. Our, our, our policy has been consistently, we pay cash, so we don't defer the obligation and kick the can down the road, is that what you were gonna say?
Yes, I'll just add to that. When you do refunds, it counts against your property tax collection rate, and I don't wanna artificially understate it.
Yep, that's, it's a good...
And, Robert, about this 300, it looks like that now we know that the biggest potential appeal is about to settle, and we only require a very small portion of the 300,000. And if the revow, if we have confidence in the revow company, and really, we shouldn't have that many of the tax appeals, hopefully, after the revow, now, how, how did you derive with this 300,000? Is that a super conservative number, or...
Always.
What's your, always?
That's, I was very surprised to hear what the numbers were. I discussed it with Ray, I just didn't do it carte blanche. I, I had, I had to give instructions to our chief accountant to book this number during 2012. I discussed it with Ray and Jim, the answer was proceed.
I mean, the one exposure we have is, we had 500 taxpayers' requests in formal hearings. Those are members here. Which is the right, and just, so those, if they weren't happy with that process, or they didn't get the result that they thought, they have the option to file, and the county, in a revow year, extends the filing deadline. So normally, it's April 1st, in a revow year, they extend it to May 1st, so we're not gonna have a sense of the activity. It's, this is a conservative approach, because even if people file in this calendar year, it's unlikely that the matter will be decided, especially if it's a value over a million dollars that goes to the state tax court, there are two, three years lag. If it's a county appeal, under a million dollars, those are more, you know, it's a lower financial exposure to us, and those, we will have an impact in this calendar year budget. So we think, we sat down with Matt O'Donnell, we estimated, and the assessor, and Robert and Jim and I, and we went through the, all the pending appeals that we had outstanding, and Matt basically said, this is the number that I believe would be appropriate to establish. He was very pleased that the settlement with Stop and Shop came in significantly less than he, the request, and it was a five years' worth of appeals, and we did, unofficially, the mayor and I did go meet with the property owner, and on top of the shop right up in Chatham Township, and the mayor kind of prevailed and said, this is important for the town to get resolved, and the books were closing on January 25th, and on the 25th, we settled this matter, subject to you ratifying the settlement.
In addition, I was very comfortable, because the surplus was coming in the number that it was. This is a direct charge against surplus. Questions?
Part of, part of that, part of that concern with the revow, actually, is, is the commercial portion of that. So I, you know, and that, that's always a concern for me, because there's enough out there, you don't, you know, with realogy coming in, you don't know what's gonna happen with that, you know, basically, when they're finished with that, that particular building. And we have other commercial developments coming up, so I, I don't think that this is terribly conservative, the 300,000, with that many people coming in. I mean, 500 people asking to be acknowledged, you know, during the revow process, I think is a lot.
Well, I mean, another portion of that, it's, it's a point well taken, and it's an unknown. On the commercial side, the one thing that we have done is, anyone that filed an appeal for a prior year, and the large, so we have settled all of the commercials at Gerolda, and also we have settled with 175 Park Avenue, and as part of the settlement, we got them to agree to the 2013 assessed valuation as part of the settlement, that the judgment will be what's called affirmed, so they will file an appeal and agree with our decision. So as part of the settlement, we've wrapped up all of the properties at Gerolda, which is our biggest exposure traditionally, and also the park, the former Verizon property. So, this will be primarily for the smaller commercials, like you were talking about, you know, the JP Morgan Chase Banks, the Providence Banks, or those who are the smaller scale, who may feel the valuation is not consistent with what they think the value of the property is. We think it's a reasonable number.
Ben?
Also, I was gonna say, on the residential side, the step that resulted in 500 challenges is quite easy. The next step, if you don't like what you got out of it, is not so easy.
Right.
And I imagine if all 500 found the result of their first effort to be less than they expected, only a small proportion of them would still go on to the next.
And the other, the last closing remark would be, because the filing deadlines, May 1st, the impact, if any, in terms of an increased tax bill, will be in the third and fourth quarter, so that tax bill doesn't hit until August 1st. So people tend to react when they see the bill, versus, it's amorphous now when it's in assessed value, because we don't have a rate, they don't know what to apply it to. So the, normally in a revow setting, the appeals, if there's gonna be significant appeals, is in the year following the implementation, so 2014. That's another reason why we wanna have a prudent reserve to start the pot, so if there is a reaction in the community in 2014, we'll have another reserve in 2014 to address whatever the issues are. It's just being cautious.
Okay.
Pat?
I just wanna address one of Pat's pros' questions.
Pat?
Sorry. I'll, I'll give you the, because the 2 percent cap, I can give you three minutes and eight seconds, so. Do the math. I was anticipating that one. Okay, Robert, back to...
We can move on to the electric utility surplus? We ended the year with 4,683,000. We ended 2011 with 4,683,000. We transferred in 2012 budget 3,516,000, and we're generating, I believe, 4.1 million in 2012, which is 3.4 million above the revenue budget, and the cancellation of approximately 700,000 in prior year appropriation reserves. So the balance at year end will increase by $600,000.
But just looking at these last five years shows the volatility, even though we were in a fixed contract, that it's, you know, you need a couple of years of a sizable surplus before you decide, okay, it's too much.
As you can see, in 2010, we basically transferred all of the surplus. But we had a wonderful financial year. 2010 was the year of the second warmest weather on the East Coast. We also, we had to do an emergency appropriation of $900,000. That had to be budgeted in the 2011 budget. That's why what we generated was only 3.2. Questions?
Jeanie?
If I remember correctly, last year, during the budget discussion, I believe that you mentioned that the profit margin that we have, right, last year, was approximately, what, 15% would be the profit?
Yeah, I'll have to look at that, yeah.
Right. I'm curious to know, you know, looking at the revenue for 2012, did that change or not? I assume it did.
I'll get you an answer.
Yeah. I assume we're doing even better than 2011.
Well, let's just say if, and I probably wouldn't have done this, I would have saved it for the following year. If we didn't have... Well, we had the hurricane, okay? But if we didn't, we would have over a million dollars of appropriation reserves to cancel. But it's, a significant amount is going to flow through at some point in time on the FEMA money. And that, the FEMA money comes in on the municipal budget, not the electric utility. It comes in the municipal budget as miscellaneous revenue not anticipated. And we collected $393,000 in FEMA money in 2012. That's part of this, and that goes right immediately to surplus. The water utility? We did take rate action in 2008, '09, and '10. And those were significant rate increases, although, as Mr. Cody can tell you, the rates are still significantly below.
70% below American Water Company.
And we have... When's the sunset on the rate increase for...
Two more years.
Two more years.
But only, it was half the rate increase?
It's only half, yep.
Now, I'm recommending you go to 450,000, because three years now does make a trend. You can see in 2010, '11, the surplus that was generated was 709,462,636. And I already know the, we're... Already know that in 2013, to cancel appropriation reserves, it's, will assist us in hitting that 450,000 dollar number. So I have confidence in that as well.
And you think we don't need a rate increase, even though we're 70% under American Water?
I haven't, okay? The last rate increase that we took, I was pretty adamant about getting that, because we needed to do three things, when decades ago, we weren't doing any of this. We continued to raise capital for water main replacements. We're raising $200,000 for the automated meter read, and we went from transferring zero at the water utility to 50,000, to 75,000, to 100, 150, to 250, to 300, to 350. So at that point in time, in 2010, we needed rate increases in order to accomplish all that. And we got it done. So I'm not recommending a rate increase.
Not even a half a percent? Small little dose of medicine for when you do the next one. I mean, I guess my question, and look, I don't want to pay more for water either, but I don't understand why, and again, I'm sure there's something philosophical we could talk about offline, why it's okay to be 70% under the going rates on a water bill, but that we have to be at market rates on electric. Conserving water is as important as conserving electricity. Maybe more important. So I guess we can talk about it offline, if you like, I mean...
Yeah, I think maybe also getting a schedule, which we've had before, not only comparing to private water companies, but compared to other municipal. It is a tough one to gauge, because we are not paying for the commodity like we are for electric. We are having to pay for the upkeep, and obviously, we want to generate, and we want to encourage, as you said, conservation with water just as much as we should with electric. So we'll add another...
Now, that makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
And the last schedule that I have is the combined surplus balances. We increased from 10,187 at the end of 2011 to 11,950. And once again, that'll be north of 12 million. And the footnote reads, "The 2012 estimate of 11 million excludes approximately 1 million that was spent on Hurricane Sandy and was funded from the electric utility." We anticipate a recapture. I guess I should probably just say 750,000, as opposed between 750 and 1 million. Is that correct, Bob?
That's correct.
All right.
Did questions on...
And once again, this is a good message to send the standard force.
All right. It's a lot of information, a lot to digest. Any other questions or comments? So this sets the stage for, as we start hearing from the departments and seeing the expenses. Any other... Ben, anything else to closing? Any other for the council before I open up to the public? Okay. All right. We are now invitation for public comment, and it doesn't have to be limited to the budget, but we certainly appreciate if it is.
It'll probably solely be around the budget. I had a lot of questions.
I know.
And I sent a lot in, so I was hoping that people would have a chance to answer them in advance. I didn't want to surprise them. Pat Rowe, 25 Pine Ave, Madison. First, I want to say thank you very much. The budget looks really good, and the numbers coming out of last year look actually fabulous. It's great to see the surplus is going up, and the rate for this year actually being held relatively low. So that's good, good news. I had a bunch of questions. I guess the first, I'd start on the surplus page for the municipality. I think Robert said that this does not include some of the other reserve accounts he has. Is that correct? Does this general surplus page include money you've got reserved, things like...
Excluded.
Excluded. So do you actually have a number that you can share with the public that says what is, like, reserve surplus as well? Could you possibly publish that? Okay, whatever.
That's what I was asking earlier.
Yeah.
All right, yeah. That'd be good for the next time around. So then, that leads me to, last year, we increased our surplus by about $850,000. I'm assuming that came from a combination of revenue that was above the budget and expenses that were below. Is that correct? Okay. If I was to actually just lower the budget, and this is one of the things I had suggested in my note, is that it would be good on these pages if you, instead of showing just the 2012 budget, you actually show the 2012 actuals as best as possible, because when you're doing budget analysis, you like to look at budget to budget, but you really like to look at actual to budget, because that tells you the truth about how much you're raising this. Because again, if you took the 25 million from last year and subtracted the 850, which would be, you know, a very liberal interpretation of the savings or where the revenue came from, that would actually translate to an increase on the expense side of over 5% for the year. So really, you're saying your expenses are going up, not 2%, but somewhere between 2% and 5%. Your budget was 25.15 million. Obviously, you didn't spend that much, unless all of the gain was in revenue. So again, I'm saying your budget overstates your actuals for last year. So your actual versus the budget for this year. Anyway, that's one of the things I like to look at, when I look at the budget. In terms of the health insurance, actually, I think your number, Robert, is pretty close, because I've been looking at our number for next year, and actually, not so much next year, the year after, when the employee contributions start to kick in in earnest. And I would say the, at our level of employee salary, about the first 5% or so of increase gets covered by the employees. So if you're saying your total increase is 9%, and you're anticipating picking up 4%, that's probably a pretty good number. And your contribution may be a little bit higher, because I think your average employee is making more than our average employee. How many questions were on here?
Maybe with overtime, but I'm on the base.
Sorry? Well, Bob told me the other night, you can only get three minutes, because it was after 10 o'clock, but since it's only 8:20.
I did set my watch to four minutes this time.
Thanks. Ray, you kind of answered my question. I just had a follow-up on the revow for the library. You said that it's based on the equalized rate. So we're fairly certain that the equalized rate and the actual rate that's coming in, because equalized rate is the county's guess as to where we should be?
Right.
Is going to come in pretty close to where it should be?
Yes, and I think Robert qualified. We don't have the final valuation number from the certified valuation. So we're ballparking it. So we think, if it's not going to go up, we believe it may slightly go down.
Okay. Looking at the schedule coming up for the future budget meetings, one of the things that's on here for the last meeting is the electric and water utilities. And the more I look at them, the more I think that really, the council should start to treat them more like they're corporations, or a corporation. They're a business, really. They bring in revenue. They have expenses, and the surplus, you know, comes back to us as kind of a profit. But, you know, as the shareholders, we should really get a better understanding of how they work. When you look at the budget, you really don't get a good understanding. Even when you look at the audit, sometimes it's hard to understand as a company, if you treated it that way, what's the true P&amp;L? Because you budget one thing, but at the end of the year, you may spend more or less, depending on what the electric usage is, and later on, you adjust it. So we never get a real sort of picture of what's happening there. And as you move into the new rates, which, are the new rates this year or 2014?
2014.
Okay, because it sort of made it sound like it was this year, but in 2014...
May 31st, 2014.
Yeah. Again, I had come to the town hall on the capital budget, and I had estimated there's a fairly significant upside when that happens. And I think we should really start to talk about now what, not only the current spending and the current profit looks like, but what it will look like as we move into the next three or four years, where that should increase significantly. Do we look at a tax, not a tax decrease, a rate decrease, as Rob suggested? Do we look at that being our source of funds for the capital projects? Because again, you're going to be talking about capital the same night. So I think, you know, I'll send just more ideas on that, but I think we really have to take a harder look at that, not just as a department, but really as a profit center. And I'd like to see that happen.
And just as a reminder, there is the, it doesn't hurt to start thinking along those lines now, but there is the, not just the commodity, which we know is going down, but getting it from point A to point B, and that's the wild card in this equation.
Well, I think Jim mentioned that there are some rate increases coming. But I think there were less than a million, and my calculation was the additional profit's going to be at least $5 million. So...
Yeah, we'll see.
I'd like to see the math. I mean, I gave you my numbers. I'd like to see what you guys estimate based on what you're seeing. And then the last thing is the open space. That's not included out here. And that's going to go up, if nothing happens on the council, by $250,000 or so this year. So if you add that to the rate that you're increasing here, the actual taxpayer increase is going to go up over 3% per year, correct?
And we need to have a conversation on open space, but if we leave it at the 2%, it will go up significantly. But it will, if you spread it out over all the years that it's been around, it would be a small increase year to year.
It's a one-time bump.
Yes, so it's, we need to, you know, coming out of the presentation on Monday from the MAF, as we look at funding the fields, we have to look at our needs and how that fund will support it. So that is a, first half of the year, obviously, a conversation we'll need to have, and I anticipate a major agenda item in the next, within the next two months for a council meeting on it.
Because I mean, I'm assuming you have to make a decision before you set the tax rate for next year.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's a no decision, it's 2%.
Well, that's a decision in itself.
Right.
I'm saying, you know, it's going to happen. If you don't do anything, it would happen at a lesser rate if you change your, the number. But either way, there's a decision, whether it's, you know, it's overt or covert. I don't know what the right term is. But the other thing was, you know, we talked about this Monday night briefly. You're talking about, what are you going to do with the MAF, and possibly taking on additional debt? I didn't see any additional increase in the debt service line, so that, I think that needs to be addressed as well. And the question is, does it come out of the open space in terms of the fields, that we're purchasing any improvements, or is it going to be a separate amount for things that are not field-related, or is everything going to go there? I think it'd be good to have a good understanding of what the borough plans to do about debt. I don't know if you already planned that, but that's what I'm asking.
And that is a plan, and the assumption, if there is any long-term debt, whether it's land purchase or improvements, it is all, can be covered from the open space, because it was, that's what the fund was intended for, and that's what it would go towards.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the short of it is, we have discussed it. The policy issue underlying it, though, has not been discussed.
When you say "we," you mean...
We.
Okay, but I mean, when I say "we," I mean the community.
No, I understand, but we're not at a point at which it's valuable to discuss it publicly, because this policy decision needs to be made initially.
But again, I would like, I'd hope you'd make a presentation to the public about what your thoughts are, and ask us for some info before you make your final decision.
That is a plan.
That's a public discussion, that's not executive.
That is not executive. That's definitely a public discussion.
Thank you very much.
And just for the record, that second beep, that was the eight-minute mark, so...
Well, I appreciate the extra time, but I don't think I'm wasting your time.
No, 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 I was...
You're giving a massive turnout, and I don't know if Bob has any questions.
How's the school budget?
Jeremy already told me he has done, so this is...
Do you want to get a picture with a council member, too?
Thank you.
Do you want to get a picture with a council member while you're up there?
That's right.
I just want to make sure you guys cash that check, though.
Seriously, thank you for your questions and your input. Now, we'll...
We're never going to televise the board event, but I'm hoping to do podcasts, which could be available very shortly after our meeting, so when you're on the elliptical at Hawaii, it's not fair.
It's one side.
Anyway, we'll have those conversations offline.
It's like, if Robert wants to work for free, he's free to come and put video.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing that, I close this part of the meeting, and again, thank Pat for his good questions and input. And move to number seven.
Motion to adjourn?
My pleasure.
Thank you all.